Welcome to the March, the March 2022 AMSA Board of Trustees Meeting. For opening items, I'm going to call the meeting into order. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the AMSA YouTube page. See the AMSA webpage for more details. Sarah, would you please announce the board members in attendance?
She is no longer in the meeting.
Why don't we wait, wait for Sarah? She's taking the minutes and such. I accidentally got myself kicked out of the meeting right beforehand. Bella is here also. Sarah, welcome back. And you're on mute. Sarah, could you please announce the board members in attendance at the meeting?
Okay, let me see. I was knocked off. I have to get back here. Okay. So make sure everyone's here that I have on record. Okay. Bella Gorman is here, Don Capello, Jill Schaefer, Kristen Carney, Liz Saul, Mara Webster, Roger Jarrett, Sheila Kelly, and Zachary Oglesby. And so Miehdi said she would be a few minutes late.
Okay. Next, I'd like to seek in a volunteer for Timekeeper to keep us on schedule for tonight.
I can do it.
Thank you, Zach. Next up, at the end of this meeting, we'll be going into an executive session, strategy session for negotiation with nonrepresented personnel, our executive director, and we'll not reconvene into open session because doing so, an open session, would be detrimental to our position. And Sarah, you've recorded our attendance and guests at this point?
Yes.
At this point, I'd like to open the, open the floor up to public comment, if there's any public comment this evening.
Hi, it's Liz. I did have one request. Marius, sorry, and I apologize if I don't get the name correct. Marius Albada, are you on the phone?
If you're on the phone, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself, and you have the floor for public comment. Start by introducing yourself with your name and your topic. We hope we're having technical difficulties with the people on the two phone numbers on the line, or if there are other people.
I'm just looking very quickly to see how you unmute on the phone in case they are unaware. According to this, it should be star six if you are someone trying to unmute and cannot.
You have the ability to unmute? Mike, why don't you try unmuting the one phone number at a time and see if, starting with the 221 phone number?
The way it works is I ask them to unmute.
Ah, okay.
And I've done so for each of those two numbers.
All right.
So they may not be the person who has registered to speak.
Okay, well, since we, at this point, will, we'll close a public comment, and if the person comes in a little later before Ellen's report, they'll badly take, I will, I'll take a motion to reopen public comment if, if they arrive soon. So next up, we have our vote section of the meeting. We have two votes. First is a vote for the approval of the minutes, and the second is for our consent agenda, which has one item in it. So first, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from the February 17th meeting. Some moved.
I'll second it.
A move by Zach, second by Liz. Any discussion? No discussion? Sarah, please call the roll.
You're muted, Sarah.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Kristen Carney?
Yes.
Liz Saul?
Yes.
Mara Webster?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Zachary Oglesby?
Yes.
That's everyone.
Motion passed unanimously. Second is the consent agenda item for the change in how we handle executive session minutes, Policy A102. I'll take a, any, any discussion?
I just have a question. Who is the Director of Accountability?
Sarah is the Director of Accountability.
Okay.
Good question. Any other questions or comments about the consent agenda?
We just need to update the amended date. It says May 28th, 2020.
Sorry, that was my mistake.
That's all.
Good catch. All right. So it's all looking for a, a, a motion to approve the amended version of the consent agenda with the corrected date?
Motion to approve?
So Bella and second, please?
I'll second it.
Wait a minute. So that was Bella and who was the second?
I recognize Sheila as the second.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? There are no further discussion. I'll take it. Sarah, please call the roll.
Hold on one second, please. Okay. All right. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Kristen Carney?
Yes.
Liz Saul?
Yes.
Mara Webster?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Zachary Oglesby?
Yes.
Okay, that's everyone.
All right. The consent agenda has been approved unanimously. We are now on to the report section of the meeting, starting with Ellen.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Let me share my screen with you. In the wrong order there. There we go. I hope everyone enjoys the day. The weather's starting to get warmer. It's starting to feel, feel nice, except a couple of days this week when it was really cold, but we're thinking positively here. So welcome to our board meeting here on March 31st. Do appreciate all of you changing. Originally, we were scheduled for the 24th, and here we are on the 31st. So do appreciate that. All right, our overview for our report tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about the lottery results. We held our lottery a little bit later this year, so we, it was on March 1st, so it was after our last board meeting, so I have the results for you and the waitlist numbers and the attrition numbers. That would be students that have left during the school year. Also tell you a little bit about the visit, visit we had last week from our state rep and state senator. I have some photos from that. Also, a quick update on Leslie University in a, in a collaboration that we have happening there. Some of you may remember this pre-COVID, and it has picked up again, so I want to update you on that. Also, some of you participated in our DEES visit, the Core Criteria Site Visit Mid-Cycle Review, and we had a quick update from that as well. And then a quick building update, little bit of razzle dazzle time, and a review of the upcoming events. All right. So here's your data for the, for the evening. So I want to just run through this with you quickly. As I mentioned to you last month, we had over 1,000 applicants. That was an all-time record for AMSA. And we brought in, if we start on the far side here, on under sixth grade, we accepted 140. We had 140 seats that we offered out to our next new sixth grade class. Of that 140, 49 of them are siblings. And we did not break down, what you'll see in these numbers is, is you see the number 70 there under Marlborough, that we took in 70 new sixth graders. We actually took in, took in 88. And part of that number is from the 49 siblings. So Linda didn't break down the siblings in which town they came from, but you can see, if you look, if you add across the 49 and in straight across, it comes out with 140. So the three from Clinton and the 14 from Hudson, four from Maynard, and the 70 from Marlborough, those are all new students and not siblings. And then you can see the waitlisted number underneath. We have 337 waitlisted sixth graders broken down into the following towns. And you can see the number of core, of non-core towns on the waitlist is 184. So I'm sure that if, if we have folks that don't take those seats that have been offered out, we have plenty on the waitlist and from our core towns to fill those seats. Also, seventh grade, same thing. We didn't accept many seventh graders. That class is, is big enough, and so we just took in two so far, but we will backfill if those numbers change. People tend to move over the summer and things like that, and then Linda will, will backfill from the waitlist there. In grades eight and nine, we did not accept any new students in grades eight or eight and nine. We wait until students withdraw, and they do for a number of reasons, especially going into ninth grade. That is a place where we often have some shifting. If students choose to go to a private school, or they go back to their home district, or, or over to Assabette, over to our technical school. Currently, we have 210 applications on the waitlist there in, in eighth, in ninth grade. So that's what we have right now. These numbers will continually shift as Linda goes through applications, and she confirms that students actually do live in the core towns. You know, we, we, she goes through that with a fine-tooth comb because you really have to in order to follow the regulations. There's very particular regulations around that. And if you're not familiar with those, you can take a look under the Registry Application page on our website. There's a lot of information there. So to talk about the attrition this year, 966 students, that is our cap. At the moment, we have 965, and that's because we had one withdraw on March 14th. But we, so far during this year, we've had 17 students withdraw. We had 12 withdraw in the 2021 school year. And we had, we added 16 students so far. And last year, by this time, we had added eight. And they left us for the following reasons. So two moved out of state, three moved to Hudson and now attend Hudson Public Schools, probably because of the, the transportation issues around that. Five went back to Marlborough, two to Clinton, one to Maynard. And then we had, these were seniors that didn't graduate last year. One graduated late, and two were not able to, to receive their AMSA diploma, various, various reasons. And here's, we had some special visitors on March 11th. And you can see Senator, State Senator Jamie Eldridge there in the gray suit, and then State Representative Danielle Gregoire. It was actually a wonderful visit. We had a couple of students that toured them around. You can see Dawn there, she's some familiar faces, and Mark Fiedel. And Laura was with us as well. And just also to mention that our Marlborough Mayor, Mayor Arthur Digen, also came and he visited with Anders and I for about an hour on Monday. Had a great visit with him. And Meredith was with him as well, for those of you who know Meredith Harris. And, and we had, we had a wonderful time with them. But this was a, we, we sat down with, with Jamie Eldridge and Danielle Gregoire. I had a PowerPoint presentation that I did for them, talked to them about the new building project and what our hopes and dreams were, and answered questions. And then the kids took them for a tour around campus. And, and you can see in the further picture, that's our Science Department Chair Krista Jugowski, and Christie is giving them a tour of, of our research lab. And so you can see, everybody was very happy. It was a wonderful day, and our kids, as always, just made us feel so proud because they were awesome. So just a little update on Leslie University. Prior to COVID, we had a wonderful program. It was all mapped out and ready to happen with a collaboration with Leslie University. And, and then COVID hit, and it didn't happen. But this is a teacher, like a teacher training program, basically. And yeah, there's so many benefits to bringing in, you know, people who are, you know, either young folks right out of a master's program or coming in to this master's program, or, you know, those of us who change careers mid-stride. And so we will be taking in, and we actually have two candidates who will be joining us from Leslie University. They're currently in a master's program, teaching program. One of them in computer science and one in mathematics. And they'll be training with our teachers and doing student teaching hours. And we're very, very excited about this, this collaborative effort here with Leslie. And, and my, there's a lot of wonderful positives to this, this program, but, but one really is, is it gives us a pool of candidates, right? Especially when we're talking about computer science. There's so, it's so hard to find candidates out there with a computer science background, the kind that we need, who are willing to, to work as teachers in classrooms. And so this, this is a theater program, and it's one of the first computer science licensure programs in the state of Massachusetts. Computer science is not something that, that the state has had licensure program. Padmaja Bandru, I was actually part of that, that committee on the state level that created what that licensure program would look like. And so now we'll be helping out young folks and career changers to become teachers. So it's, it's exciting, exciting, and we're really looking forward to it. And thank Padmaja for all the work that she's put in during all this, this time to finally launch this program with Leslie. If you want to take a look at the slides later, you can click on here. It says Leslie Teacher Internship Program, and that will take you to the page on our website where folks apply. So we have our mid-cycle review, our Core Criteria Site Visit, and these are the criterion that they were looking for during the visit. And I, and I mentioned this during our, the February board meeting. What I did hear is I listed them for you again, so you could kind of have an idea of what they were looking for. There was four, was five of you, I think, that were, that took part in this on a Zoom call. Appreciate your time doing that. I know that, that that's, there's a lot of pressure involved in that. It can be, it can be a kind of a rough experience. We actually had a very joyful experience as I sat with the folks from the Department of Education with our department chairs, our academic department chairs, and Mike and Anders and Amanda Sensei, our vice principal. And really, it was after the, the initial butterflies go, it is a time to really share with them what's really wonderful about AMSA and the people and our, and our students and our teachers and the wonderful job that, that we do. And so it always ends up, you walk away feeling, feeling really good about what we do as a school. And then at the end of the day, so there's these visits that we have, 90 minutes with the board, it was 90 minutes with the leadership, an hour with teachers. And then part, so part of their team does those interviews. And then one, they had one person that was rotating through, that went into all different classrooms and visited. Then they sat down with, with Anders and myself and Mike and Amanda at the end of the day. And they just did a quick report out to us on initial findings on Criterion 1 and Key Indicator 6.2. So Mission and Key Design Elements and Instruction. And they basically just put a kind of a sentence together for us, and they, and they read it to us. It's very structured. It's scripted. They can only say so much, but I want to share with you what they said to us. And then we get a report in six weeks. Then we, we will go through that report. We can check it for any kind of factual errors in, in the report. Then they'll amend it, and then they will send us out the final report. And as soon as I get that final report, I will share that with you as well. But I would expect it would be in two months. So what they said to us was, ah, would you believe that the little sherry thing is right in the way there? Oh, gosh. Okay. I'll see what that says under there. It says, "In its 17th year, AMSA has a common understanding of its mission and is faithful to the mission, particularly in regard to the celebration of knowledge. The finding also indicated that the instruction reflects high expectations and is conducive to learning." And so, you know, when you have a group of folks who go to schools, charter schools in particular, all over the state, and they walk into our school, and they are immediately able to see and feel these things. This is our mission. This is who we are. These are our values. And we're talking about, they're, they're, one of the things that charter schools have to do is we have to be faithful to our mission. That's a very important statement. And they said, when they came in and they interviewed all of us and all of you, that there's a common understanding of what our mission is, and that they're seeing that we're faithful to it, especially around celebration of knowledge. And when we talk about celebration of knowledge as our mission and joy in learning, which is something we talk about all the time, I can't tell you how this, how this makes you feel. It was just a, I, I thought we were going to leap out of our seats, Anders and I. It was, it's just, it was just so wonderful. And also that, that we talk about, you know, are our expectations high enough? Are we doing a good enough job, especially post-COVID, if we can call it post-COVID? You know, and, and so what they said was, yes, we were in your classrooms. Went into a couple dozen of them at least, and we saw high expectations, and we saw an environment that was conducive to learning. And I think that that's one of the pieces that sets AMSA apart, that you walk into our classrooms, you walk down our halls, and you see kids learning. You hear quiet in the hallways, there aren't kids mingling all over the place. It, there's, there's order, and there's learning, and there's excitement happening in those classrooms. And I could not have been more proud of our whole AMSA community, for sure. So wonderful statement to get from them, and I did share that with the staff shortly afterwards. The area, the only area that they did mention that we need to improve around is around culturally proficient teaching. Now, we, we've known this, we've talked about this. This is also a brand-new criterion. It's the first year that they've come into schools and looked at culturally proficient teaching. And so I did add a, because even the terminology was a little, little new to us, to be perfectly honest. Yeah, I did add a link in here if you want to go onto the website and see what, what they're talking about here. We're not 100% sure that we agree with, with, with that statement, but, but we're going to look into it. And obviously, this work, being culturally proficient and making sure that all students of all backgrounds and all abilities feel welcome and at home in our school is a goal that we've been working on. But we certainly are in the beginning stages, and we'll continue to commit to that work. So very happy with that. So now we have a quick building update for you. So the initial estimates did come in mid-March. They were a few days late, but they did come in. And as you probably expect, due to factors beyond our control, the numbers obviously were higher than we anticipated. And we've always talked about that this building project was going to be done in phases. There are certain things that we need to do, we have to do in order to have the equity in our property to cover the mortgage. So we need to get the most we can out of, out of our best bang for our buck. And, you know, due, due to everything that's happened with the supply chain and just the cost of building materials and, and workers and, and all of that, it just, it just ended up costing more than, than we had hoped. But the team has gone kind of, I don't want to say back to the drawing board because that's not really true, but they're really reassessing it and looking at other ways that we may be able to do much of what we want, but maybe in a little bit of a different way. So the team is definitely reworking the scope of the project. We will have updated estimates based on, you know, some kind of cool ideas that, that the team has come up with. But you are expecting to come tonight to vote, and that won't be happening. So I do appreciate all of you moving the date of the meeting to the 31st, hoping that we would have some real plans for you to vote on, but that's not going to happen tonight. And just, just the idea and the thought around good things, you know, come to those who wait. And I, one of the many, many, many things that, that I have learned in this position, it's taking one day at a time and one step at a time and not, not letting thoughts get out of control because, you know, something isn't happening immediately the way that, that we want it to, to go. Because typically, in the end, things work out. And I once again really believe in our team, grateful for all the work that they've put into this, and honestly, their continued commitment. Because the team has not given up in any sense of the word. They just need some more time. And so I just really believe if we continue to keep breathing and keep taking one step in front of the other, that we will find a really wonderful solution for AMSA for many, many years to come. Now, we have a little bit of razzle dazzle for you. Do want to just remind you that you should be getting a weekly email from Mike Finkel. And in that, there's a link that takes you right to the, to the news page on the website. And so if you do that regularly, you've probably seen some of these photos. There's videos and, and a lot of great information there. Mike's done a fantastic job making sure that our website is vital, and it's alive, and it's changing and being added to all the time. So always feel free to, to, to take a look at the, the materials there. So this first one here, Mr. Prue, you all met Mr. Prue in, in February, one of our beloved history teachers. These are his ninth graders, and I know I've brought pictures like this to you in the past, but this is one of my favorite projects that, that we do at AMSA. And he does such a great job. And one of the things that I really love about this is that all his ninth graders, they do a World War I project. And they, then he, he breaks the class up into two. So when you see that the, some of the, some of the students are presenting their projects, and it's a variety of things that they can choose that they want to do, you can see there's other students going around with clipboards. And so there, and there's a series of questions that, that are on the sheet, and they go around and they interview the different, with their, the different projects. So they go, they go around, and they've got to complete, I think, four or five, and they get extra credit if they do more interviews with, with the presenters. And then the next day, they flip. And so they're, not only are they really learning about the project that they've chosen, the topic that they've chosen, but then they're going around and they're learning from their classmates as well. And then once again, writing it down, asking the crush questions and writing it down, and just another way to process it and take that information into their, their long-term memory. So it's, it's a really cool project. Peter, Mr. Prue invites us every year, and I sure do love going and seeing the kids do this, this project. So I thought you'd have fun kind of looking at that. And then we had a chess club had their first tournament since 2018. So this is, this is super fun. I, the, the looks, the concentration on their faces. And since 2018, we used to have a chess club, and then we didn't, and then we did, and then COVID came. And so here we are back. And you can see, one of the other things I really like to see too is the different ages. As you can tell, some of these students are young, middle school, and some of them are in the middle. And then up in the top there, I have one of our, our older students that's participating. So it's wonderful to see them interact, you know, all different grades, all different backgrounds, male, female, others. It's just, it's super. So really grateful for that pro, that program coming back. Kids are enjoying it. Then just a reminder that we have the 2022 AMSA Golf Tournament. Don't want to forget to put a plug in there. So this is a wonderful project. We have folks from, from inside AMSA that We have folks from from inside AMSA that are serving on the committee, Pete Jones, Dan Amroth, Mark Vital. Laura Webster is deeply involved in this, along with another group of our parents who who really put a tremendous amount of time and effort into this. Last year, I believe they netted about seventy or eighteen thousand dollars. Each year, they try to make it bigger and better. I would encourage you to come. This is a lot of fun. I I don't currently play golf, although I am going to stop playing golf. But I don't currently play golf, but but Anders does. But last year we ran around, they they gave us a golf cart and we just had a blast going around to the different golf teams, the foursomes and and interacting with them, and it was a beautiful day. So I would encourage you, there's also a silent auction. If you'd like to donate something to that, please reach out to us. I'd love to have you come to the golf tournament, whether it's to play or whether it's just to to talk to everyone. They have a lovely lunch and it is a wonderful, wonderful day. So some upcoming events, I leaving on the the BOT strategic planning meeting, we're looking at May to June right now and we'll get that on the calendar as soon as we can. I just don't want to leave it off, have it leave our memory. Spring break is coming up, April eighteenth to the twenty-second. I can hardly believe that tomorrow is April first. And now this is this is when things really start happening, it's very, very busy. We have the National Arms Society induction at six P M. at Tejano Regional High School, that's on April twenty-seventh. The Drama Club has three showings of Aladdin. And there's more information on the website about that location and all. We will be having our Art and Science Night. So for those of you who've been around for a while, Arts Nights, there's usually two a year, there's one in January, there's one in May. We didn't have the January one this year because of because of COVID. But this year, we're trying something new. And I met actually with Christie and Sarah Preston just yesterday to talk about what this is going to look like. It will be a combined Arts and Science Night. The Arts will mostly take place in the in the one sixty-five building, the music in the lower school building, Science Night in the upper school building. Mark Vital will be working on having different companies come out with us, would love for you to interact and join us for that night. It would be, you know, a night too to be thinking about our fundraising and our capital campaign as well. So please mark that in your calendar. We have AMSA's graduation for the class of two thousand and twenty-two on June tenth. And then once again, the golf tournament is coming up on the fifteenth. There's also a load and list of senior events that are coming up. They have breakfast that they have and they they have a number of different things. We also, I didn't put it in here, but next week, starting Monday, we have another Spirit Week, which is going to be awesome. The kids love the one we do in this in the fall, which is traditional. This is a little bit different, but it feels like the kids could use a pick-me-up and and just to it just to have fun and and celebrate our seniors as we as we get them ready to head off to to college. So that is what I have at the moment. Very happy about spring coming. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Questions for Ellen.
I have a question. When do you expect a quote or some estimates back from the architects or?
Bob, sure, sure. Bob mentioned this morning, we were on another call, that he thought that before we had a lot more information, it would be about another month. Yep. I can say that that all you have to do is ask a few people around and they'll and and everyone who's in our position seems to be running into the same same situation. You know, it it's disappointing, but we're just gonna keep pushing through. Any other questions?
Ellen, I had a question on the on the lottery.
Sure.
Yeah, if you go back to the slide, I wasn't able to see the bottom row on the slide for the ninth graders.
Okay, one second. I am, I'm trying to.
Welcome Spring Slide, it's beautiful.
Isn't that pretty? Okay, here we go. Okay, all right. So what where is it?
I can see it now, in the previous one, I wasn't able to see the ninth grade.
Okay.
But the question I had was, did we look, were we affected by the Marlboro cap on MAC students this year?
No, we were not. No, we were not, but we are getting close to Hudson. So that may be something we, well, we'll definitely have to watch both next year, but no, we were not. We could take kids in, that's we took seventy kids.
We took.
Yeah.
Plus some in.
It's, we took plus seventy in Marlboro, eighteen of eighteen more were siblings, yeah.
All right, excellent. Okay, that answered my question, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Let's call for questions. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the parent rep report. Bella, you have the floor.
So I really didn't have a lot of, there was not really much communication to me forwarded to me from parents. There was one parent that they reached out around cell phone use and some other privileges. And I've already talked to Mr. Muraki this morning, so I think that's been addressed. And so I think all things pretty quiet.
Any questions for Bella? Next up, Zach, faculty report.
I have basically nothing. Very quiet over here. Any of the things that were brought up to me, one was in relation to the way the school year is ending off just because of the snow days, which is out of our hands because of state law. And the other one was related to the building project, which with the fact of the numbers is does not matter. So I have nothing.
All right, thank you, Zach. Any questions for Zach? Are there any items that the board wishes to flag for further discussion? Hearing none, we are on to the Chair Business portion of the meeting. So first, first up, I'd like to, you know, definitely we're working on board and committee member recruiting at this point. I'm announcing that we formed a recruiting task force, which is being chaired by Sheila. And Bella and myself are members of the Recruiting Task Force. And definitely would like to encourage board members to look at their employer and their contacts that you have in LinkedIn or your network, especially looking for non-parent representatives to round out our board. People that have a passion for AMSA and education that would round out our board as we continue to need to bring in new members. Ideally, members would start by serving on a committee first and then moving on to being a trustee. So I encourage you to encourage you to look at your network and if you know if candidates are interested, have them contact Sheila or myself. Second up, I'd like to thank the board members that participated in the DEES Roundtable. And so anyway, I mean, I think it was a very successful, very successful roundtable and look forward to the feedback from DEES. And so thanks, thanks again for that. Thank you to the staff for participating in the in the roundtable. I was very excited by Ellen's report. And just to remind everybody, you know, the our mission is that the Advanced Math and Science Academy will create an atmosphere of celebration and knowledge where children of all backgrounds and abilities excel at all subjects, especially math, science and technology, empowering them to succeed in the workplace in our modern high-tech world. And, you know, that's what, that's what these came back and told us. So I am so excited that our mission is being exercised and demonstrated where everybody can see it. And see, that's it. I do understand that there the parent, the the person who wished to have public comment is now available. So first, hang on one moment, please, I will get to you just in a moment. I just wanted to see if there was any questions for me as board chair from our board members. With that, I'd like to, we're going to adjust the agenda and move back to the public's public comment area of our board of our board meeting to accommodate you and so I'd like you to introduce, provide your name and the topic you wish to present and give you the floor. So the floor is here.
Yes, thank you very much, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful, I'm I'm the father of Lucian, he is new at AMSA and hopefully my daughter will be joining next year as well. Two things that I wanted to to mention, I, we missed the the parent teacher conferences. I don't know if there is any plan to to have those happen. I think, you know, we've been segregated from, you know, face-to-face contact for too long and we need to to see who is, you know, put the faces next to names. So that's the first thing. The other thing is I, it's just an issue of policy. I was informed that in order for a certain student to join a certain more advanced class, they are required per AMSA policy to take a certain test to place them into that more advanced course. I was not aware of that. If that's the case, I'd like to, your comment on that and where I could find that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your feedback. Ms. Muraki will reach out to you to help answer your questions in regards to the policy. So thank you. We have done with, anything else for Board Chair? Oh, I think Ellen already announced it. We are targeting the Board Offsite Planning Meeting to targeting the May-June timeframe. And with that, moving on to Committee Reports, starting with Finance. Kristin.
Okay, so apologize for this question, but with the consent reports, are we still going through the detail about meeting as opposed to just the reports? So we have a consent report out there with the financials.
If that's already been voted on, right?
Well, there there was no votes coming out of Finance. I think a quick, high-level summary, you know, couple minutes, but not going to detail.
No problem, so great. The financials for the month were as expected, right? We were favorable on the revenue line, thanks to the most recent update of the tuition reimbursement from the state. And we also had some favorability on the expense line. We had slightly lower expenses, so very favorable again for the month of February on the financials. And for the other thing that I did want to mention, Leanna worked with the town of Marlboro to obtain a hundred thousand dollar credit against the real estate taxes. So it was a real good guy. There was some delays in the filing as a result of the transfer of the building and so she was able to go back and get that. So I did want to make that mention so that everybody was aware of that very favorable item on the PNO. Thanks, Leanna. Yep, this consent and everything's out there, so it looked real good. And that's what I have for Finance.
Any questions for Kristin? Development Committee, like to have Maura sub in for Ben as to report Development Committee.
I'm sure thing, real quick. Basically, just an update, we've been working with the Capital Campaign Committee and our consultant. She actually came to the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken. And we're just kind of in the phase of putting together a lot of the materials, working on individual asks and some corporate relationships. If Betsy hasn't already, she's going to be reaching out to every board member to connect and talk about individual connections, relationships. So keep your eyes open for that. And if you have any trouble or you don't hear from Betsy, you can flag me and let me know and be happy to make the connection if necessary. We're also looking at doing events, not sort of like big fancy events, but really opportunities for parents in our community to get together and learn more about the campaign as we learn more about the campaign and kind of where we're at when we have some plans that are more finalized, looking at new numbers. So pay attention to your inboxes, because there'll be more coming on that, the more information we get. And let me just look through Ben's notes real quick. Oh, if anybody is interested in advance of actually hearing about the campaign, on how you can get involved, what kind of gifts we're looking for, because we are looking for gifts. I actually had the opportunity to talk to one of Mr. Muraki's classes about sort of marketing of the campaign and so had some good conversation there with a number of twelfth and one-eleventh grader. But there's a lot of interest out there and there's a lot of questions and there's a lot of curiosity about how to get involved with Capital Campaign. So if you do have questions, feel free to reach out to either the Development Committee or the Capital Campaign Committee and trust me that there's more information coming on that. Did I miss anything, Ellen?
No, not at all. We're just waiting for finalized a little bit more of the building information so we have something to actually show people that they'll be investing in. But anyone who's interested, just let us know.
Any questions for Maura? All right, thank you, Maura. Liz, Education Committee.
Hi, everyone. I sent, I did include the update, which includes a PowerPoint slide, which you may find interesting. So basically what we did is Sarah was able to pull some information out of the district report card and we were able to do a comparison of the of the results to the core towns as opposed to doing it to the entire state of Massachusetts. So we actually did find that information to be more helpful and actually Sarah and I are going to go through the tool tomorrow so that we are able to pull out some additional information. That way there, we can, we can continue to do this going forward. So that was one of the items that we discussed at the March meeting. The other item was, we just got a final update on the, I think I've I've shared with you a couple times about the senior exit survey that was being run. So they did end up running that just, I think, the week after we met for the Education Committee. And they were able to get some really terrific feedback for Mike and he's actually going to be sharing it with us at the April Education Committee meeting. And I will plan to share it either at the April Board Meeting or the May Board Meeting, depending on availability of time. So one of those two two meetings, I will be happy to provide an update. But really great feedback and really great participation numbers. So that was, that was really good. And we've already been discussing sort of some of the lessons learned that came out of running the survey in case they they choose to run it in the future. So that's it for Ed Committee.
Questions for Liz?
Sorry, I lost my lost my place. What's the next committee?
Governance.
Should be asking governance. Oh, sorry, I had my screen off. So not to rehash too much, but we're just focused really on recruitment and our strategic goal planning and how to formalize that as well. So we did meet this month and that's about it.
Questions for Sheila? And I found my agenda. So we are done with governance. There has been, any, any other questions for committees in general?
Roger, real quick, I did want to mention, I forgot.
Roger, real quick, I did want to mention, and I forgot, Mr. Finkel reminded me that there is a web page on the AMSA website dedicated to the Capital Campaign, and you can find it. It's msax.org/community/capital-campaign. So it's under the Community section, if people are curious.
Thank you. I was actually looking, and that's why I got lost, lost my agenda while browsing it. So it looks, looks good. Encourage everyone to take a look. All right. So there were, were no items flagged for discussion from our reports, meeting wrap-up. Sarah, do you have a? So let's see, we had some from previous action items. That one has obviously been done, that the Liz and Sarah connected about the district report card data. So there's summary of action items from this week, from this meeting.
No, I didn't have any.
So collect agenda. So is there any special, any special agenda items for the April Board Meeting?
Roger, I should be able to provide an update on the exit survey. So if, as long as this time, we can push it off till May if that's better, but we should have that information all set for April.
All right. Well, we'll put it on, we'll put it on the agenda for April. We can always, if it's not ready, we can push it out. And then it's better to appreciate that. That'd be great to see. Other, other special, special agenda items?
Probably the strategic planning meeting date.
Yep. Well, yeah, yeah, put that, put that as an action item. I accept it. Yep. Okay. Next up, we have, we have our, we've got our summary of action items. Meeting effectiveness, starting with the timekeeper. How are we doing on time? It looks like.
We are an hour and a half if I round. Stunningly ahead of time.
Zach is the best timekeeper ever.
Don't let Jessica say that.
Oh, I know.
So, so we're running great. We're running ahead of schedule. We've hit our items. I encourage committees to continue to get their reports in ahead of the, ahead of time. So other consent agenda feedback?
It works.
What, you know, other feedback on making the meeting even better? Things we should do or not do?
That was an all-time record. That was amazing.
I do just want to, since I'm over here with the timer, I do want to give a moment of applause to Ellen, whose presentation was exactly 25 minutes, like to the second was 25 minutes. Very impressive.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, I believe we are ready to close out the meeting. We'll be announcing that we're going into taking motion to go in to, like, do we do it as a combined motion for adjourned the meeting and executive session, or two votes?
I think we just take the vote.
Okay, I'll do it as a combined motion then. Look, and make a motion that we go into executive session, not to reconvene to to conduct the strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, our executive director. And because doing so in public session would be detrimental to our position, and because we are not reconvening, this is also a vote to adjourn the meeting. So I'm making this motion. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Who are we inviting for non-board members into the executive session?
I believe there are no, no invites. So it would be board members only, and Zach, you're you have a conflict of interest, so you would not be part of the executive session.
I was going to check, but I assumed since I didn't get the link, that was the case.
Thank you for your understanding. So no, no, no members beyond, no outside invites for this executive session?
Ellen's not. And Ellen, no.
Correct. So I believe I still need a second for entering the executive session and adjourned the meeting?
I'll second. Dawn?
Dawn is second. Sarah, please call the roll.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Gil Schaefer?
Yes.
Kristen Carney?
Yes.
Liz Saul?
Yes.
Maura Webster?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Zachary Oglesby. Did Samini ever make it?
Yes, Samini has joined as a, Samini joined at the start of Ellen's report.
Yeah, a little bit before that, but I wasn't able to participate in any of the votes.
Okay. Yeah. Got it. Got it. So we're good. Samini, yes?
Yes.
All right. Meeting, thank you, everybody, for attending. The meeting is adjourned. The executive session will start at 7:05.